First, I think our planning group does a great job of predicting where the students are. And I'd also point out, I think it's a misrepresentation to say that Southeast Lincoln isn't affordable and isn't a great place for families because there's a lot of townhouses and apartments and, you know, very, I mean, I'm the executive director of a small nonprofit and I live in that area. So there is a wide diversity across our city, so.
Just to add to some of those comments, I do believe you just have to look at how quickly Wyngong is filling. You look at Clefcorn a few years ago, it was maxi. There's plenty of schools and families that are living in that area and that are rapidly filling our schools. I do agree that Lincoln is growing along all areas of the perimeter and also the neighborhoods are refreshing. But I think we can't ignore that in the long term, if we look over decades, the Stevens Creek development is half again the size of Lincoln. It's 50% the size of existing Lincoln. And that will have a huge impact on what we consider the center of the city. It's not going to happen within the next five years, but 50 years from now, no one will think 27th is the center of the city.
Okay, the purpose of my questions was looking into black dots on the code. It was not to say north is bigger, growing faster than south. So that's number one. We'll get that elephant right out of the room. But it is an important piece to look at is, one of the things that keeps Lincoln a vibrant community is just what this map is showing us. We're growing in all four directions, but the core of our city is staying strong and populated. And that means that the buildings that we have in Lincoln are taken care of and that the children, one of the schools that was at 100% is Huntington Elementary. That's four blocks from my house. The point of that is it's affordable housing. As long as we have affordable housing in all four quadrants of Lincoln, we cannot take our eye off the ball in any of those four quadrants.
Anything else? Last one for.
Okay, thank you. The next series of slides, we'll look through elementary, middle, and high school to share with you district, city growth, and where our buildings at specific to capacity. In a little bit, we'll also talk about the capacities of those buildings. But this is going to talk to you about where those buildings might be full or at certain percentages. So this first map's elementary, and these are at 100% capacity. And that's for a number of reasons. And so you can see some are on the outskirts and some are in the middle of the city. And you might say, well, why is that? Part of it could be the turnover of a neighborhood. Part of it could be the diversity of a population. And we know that there are schools that have multiple ELL classrooms that can't be utilized as a general-purpose classroom. And that changes the capacity of the facility based on that type of a population dictating how those rooms are used. And so that neighborhood could turn over and 10 years from now, the capacity could be larger or it could be smaller than what the current capacity is based on the facility use. And so Huntington is shown here at 100% capacity. 10 years from now, it might be at 85. So those things will happen, and we acknowledge that and we know that and we try to monitor that. So this map shows six elementary schools over 100%. That doesn't look too bad. I don't feel too bad about that when I see six out of 40. I feel pretty good. The next map is now those that are 90% or greater. And you might say, well, why did we pick 90%? There's two reasons why. One is in Regulation 5120 that the board has adopted, which talks about if a building's membership is more than 90% of its program capacity, the building principal will be consulted prior to the approval of any transfers into a building. That's been a target number that you've had in place for a number of years in terms of what we believe might be an ideal capacity for a building. If you're at 100, you're probably stressing the building. You need a little wiggle room for growth. So 90% is a target that our district has set, and that's not only in elementary, it's in middle school. That's one. And one of the recommendations from the Student Housing Task Force a few years ago also talked about a percentage, and I'll just read it to you here quickly. It talked about maintain school buildings at their optimal attendance capacity of, they used a range of 85 to 95%. The middle of that range is 90. I think both of those quotes support 90%. That's what we use to promote the documents that you'll see tonight. So we believe 90% is probably an ideal capacity. If we could put the kids where we had the seats, it'd be great. We could put them right where we wanted to and none of our buildings would be overcrowded. So we have eight or nine buildings at 90. That's still not too bad.
Could you remind me of the definition of capacity and what was the other one? I mean, our capacity, when we say 90% capacity is our goal, that means that's the, any more and it kind of tips it to a little bit too much and any less is we could have more. Is that, am I correct in that understanding?
Yep. When we build a building, brand new, for instance, we're going to open more middle school. We opened Wyngong last year. We develop a program statement that says we need four fourth-grade classrooms, four third grade, four second grade. And so we develop a program and then we apply our kids per classroom, 20 for lower elementary, 24 for upper elementary. And we define a building capacity at the day we open the door. And I think at Wyngong, it was 524 or 526. So all of a sudden, the neighborhood grows and all the kids going to Wyngong, maybe we have a high ELL population or maybe we have a high special ed population. And some of those classrooms can't be used for fourth grade or second grade, and they need to be used for other purposes to accommodate the needs of our student population. Now, all of a sudden, the defined capacity of that building may go down, not likely go up, but it may go down because we have less general classrooms available to accommodate students. So now it may go from 524 to 480. And that's based on an annual process we go through with principals in terms of how their buildings are being utilized. So these maps this year, right now, that you're seeing are based on what principals reported for use of their facilities for 2016, 2017. And that capacity can vary. And then we apply the numbers of students within to tell you whether it's over or under. Does that make sense?
So capacity is kind of utilization, is that correctly stated?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Not saying we could have 600 kids in here, but our capacity's only 550 because of how we need to utilize it.
Right.
Okay.
The other thing about overpopulating a building is typically our buildings have a core facilities that are really designed for the design capacity. So once you start to push more students in there, the cafeteria and the kitchen, for instance, start to get stressed, or the media center, or any of the specials, those start to get stressed. And so that's what puts pressure on us collectively to say, you put an addition on, which typically an addition is classrooms, which just adds more stress to the core facilities. Not very often do you find us going back and saying, well, let's expand the lunchroom or let's expand the kitchen. Those don't happen very often. We typically build the core facility to accommodate those fluctuations in growth.
Okay.
Okay?
My only additional clarification would be that when we generally talk about capacity, we track on our documents both design capacity, which is how the building was built, and program capacity. We generally talk about program capacity because that's about serving the students in the school. So that's recognizing the unique differences, the students in the school, and how the school needs to be used to meet those students' needs. So that is a variation of kind of words we use that I wanted to underscore, that we tend to really rely on program capacity because it's recognizing student needs.
Thank you.
So on this map, the 90% of the elementaries, about 25% of our elementaries are probably stressed or a little bit over capacity. This next map takes those hotspots of growth areas and says, here are the elementary attendance areas, the elementary buildings that could feel some stress over the next few years as Lincoln continues to grow in all those areas. Some of these buildings are already in that 90 or 100%, some are not. This is just telling you, telling us, beware, we've got some growth pockets out there that we need to be addressing or making sure that we have available facilities to accommodate those kids. Or do we adjust boundaries? Or do we close certain grade levels within a building for transfers in? So those are all tools that we have to address that as we monitor and manage student growth and community growth in those areas. So there's about 14 or 15, or maybe not quite that many, buildings that are just on that hotspot map. This next little capacity chart is just overall. It really doesn't mean a lot, but it tells you that of our elementary schools, if we just took the capacity and took our student enrollment, we're at 85% district-wide. That feels pretty good. We're under the 90. The only thing is those kids don't live exactly where we want them to live. Some of them are in those 100% buildings, some are in the 90% buildings, some are in buildings that are at 72%. So that's the dilemma we face as our city continues to grow, is we can't just move those kids where we want them. Those neighborhoods are going to continue to turn over and fluctuate. But I think it gives you a perspective of, you know what, the elementary schools aren't too bad. Doesn't mean we don't keep a watchful eye on those that are full to see what we need to do. And we do, we have those conversations. But there's also areas around the city that are growing that may demand more buildings because of where those rooftops are being built. So elementary schools, this is just kind of an exercise, we're going to do this now in middle schools, but I want to see if you have any questions. I actually don't feel too bad about elementary schools, even though we're going to tell you we need to build elementary schools.
No, I feel pretty good. I have a question about Kuzher because when I go out to that building, it seems incredibly, incredibly crowded and every space is used. And yet you've got that as a potential growth site. So help me understand the difference between the two maps. Am I understanding it wrong?
No.
Because I don't see the space inside the building and I sure heck, sure the heck hope we don't build another school the size of Roper, so.
We're telling you in two different maps that we've got stress at Kuzher.
Okay, I'm just reading the, I'm just reading the numbers. I look at when it says potential growth, not potential impact. Impact means we're going to grow more than the building can handle, not that the building can handle it.
Yep.
Thank you.
This map says 90% plus. This map here is, whoops, I apologize. This map here, there's an alarm sounding in the back of my mind saying, keep an eye on this area. There's a lot of rooftops going up.
Right across the street.
Right.
So it's already full and it's going to grow.
Okay. Yeah, I just, it just seemed backwards to me, the way the wording was. So it just hit me when you talked about, wait, I got to go back to that one.
One additional comment on elementary is this utilization factor is recognizing the fact that we opened an elementary school this year. So we would expect, based on the good planning of the last bond issue, that opening an additional elementary school would have balanced our utilization district-wide because that's what we plan to do. I think the message is we won't be able to hold on to that balance for very long because we'll outpace our growth.
And historically, don't we usually fill up a building and kind of maintain enrollment within three to five years max?
Yeah.
That's stretching it. If you build it, they will come.
Something like that.
Not to bring you down on that.
Okay, I'm going to jump to the middle schools because it's kind of interesting as well. This is the middle school 100%. Well, we've kind of talked about South and East Lincoln, and Lux and Scott have been two buildings that we know are already maxed out. Those both show up and so does Pound at the 100% plus. If we go to that 90%, a couple more buildings show up, Color and Goodrich. So that's kind of stressful because we only have 11 middle schools, soon to be 12, and half of them are already at that position. So add the hotspots, and there aren't many schools left that don't show up on that middle school map in terms of what we need to do, what we need to look at for middle schools. Now, none of this yet indicates more. And again, none of this allows us to put middle school students where we have the capacity. Middle school students are where they are. Here's the new more, we just added that on there. That's the new more attendance area, just to give you an idea. And here's that same number. Middle school capacity, that does not include more, okay? Middle school enrollment, 98%. That's stressful. You add more on there to the capacity number and that 98 goes to 89%, right where we want it to be, if the kids were right where we wanted them to be. But it still gives us some relief, still knowing that we have stress at a couple of our middle schools because more isn't going to necessarily relieve it at Scott, we know that. And maybe a little bit at Pound, but maybe not enough. Definitely at Lux, that's where we probably have the most and will have the most impact. So gives you an idea of middle schools. Any questions on that? High schools, this is probably the more stressful conversation in terms of a solution. Four out of six show up at 100% based on capacity, based on enrollment. Five out of six show up at 90%. There's the hotspots, and actually it just kind of flipped Northeast and Lincoln High based on growth, what growth could potentially do. And it's interesting because when the attendance area maps for high schools were developed several years ago, the goal was to have each attendance area kind of touch the outskirts of our community so that as Lincoln grew, they could maybe absorb some of that growth. Well, when you look at kind of those growth maps, the western edge of Lincoln High is probably one that doesn't have as much growth out here when you look at all these hotspots as comparison to what shows up out here on the tentacles or the edges of Lincoln High. That's why those maps kind of switched. So when you look at high school capacity, that's why it's stressful. We're over in total numbers.
You know, it's really interesting to me, after we did this first meeting, whatever that was, a few months ago, everybody once wanted to start asking, talking about high school. And I thought to myself, oh, that's just because high schools are big and high schools are our alma maters. But then when you start looking at this map, you go, no wonder the collective community wants to talk about high schools because they feel the pressure. They may see this, they may understand that impact that our six high schools are 106% capacity. I think it's one of the reasons why we, you know, obviously did the Career Academy, it just hasn't had the impact yet that we anticipate that program will have. But as I look at those maps and you just see, you know, what, six out of 40 elementary schools, six out of 12 high schools and middle schools, and five out of six high schools, this shows that this is a significant conversation and a significant place that we need to put some effort as a board over the next year or two to decide. Because there is no place on that map where we can build one school and solve the issues of the five high schools. It's going to have to be a multifaceted approach that probably does include a facility, probably includes a strong focus on our focus programs, it probably includes some capacity at our current buildings. And so I know that this isn't part of the 10-year plan, but it's something that we really need to dive into sooner than later to inform our 10-year plan of what we want to be doing and offering to our community in the future bond. And I feel like that's a conversation I would really like to be a part of and really want to lean in and really would like to be a, potentially even a leader on a committee or something like that, that would head up a high school discussion. Because it's citywide. I mean, it is absolutely citywide when you see that five out of six schools being impacted. Actually, six out of six in those last two maps.
Kathy, and then Barb.
You know, you bring up a good, a good pointer question there, Matt. I did some historical work on several of the high schools, looking at what they looked like when they were built. Because that really is a question none of us think of when we drive through those neighborhoods. Our high schools sit in pretty residentialized areas. And yet I'm old enough to remember Lincoln East was on the edge of Lincoln and there was nothing by Lincoln East in 1967, 68 when it opened. And when Northeast was built, it was built between three little towns, University Place, Bethany, and Havelock to be the peacemaker because these three rivals were stuck in the city of Lincoln and they didn't want to be. And it became Northeast High in the middle of a giant cornfield that actually doesn't have enough parking place or anything because there's houses right across the street. And then you go to Southeast, and Southeast was pretty open on the end and they've got parking up four blocks away and it sits kind of convoluted. Then you go down to Lincoln High, which was built as the grand high school in Lincoln 100 years ago. And none of us thought about, when they put North Star in Southwest, Southwest went south, I don't know that it went far enough west, but it went a little further south. Then we put North Star and it's about a mile, mile and a half, maybe two miles max. I can walk it between Northeast and North Star. And nobody asked the question when they put the high school up, are you far enough away from the current buildings that we're not going to have an issue? So whatever our conversation is for the next high school, part of that discussion is be, should they all be east of 14th Street? Should they all be, should five of the six be east of 20th Street? Should four of the six be east of 27th Street? And I think that those are significant discussions that we're not talking about because when you look at the maps of where the kids live, they don't necessarily live where we built those buildings a very long time ago. And we didn't know they were going to do that. Heck, I was told nobody was going to live north of Superior Street, and that was when my children were small, and my children lived north of Superior Street. So there are discussions that your comp plan helps, except when people say, no, we don't like that, we're going to go move into them anyway. And I think that's, that's the conversation we need to have as well.
Barb?
Of course, what I'm going to say, it should be talked about with every school, whether it's middle or elementary or high school, and that is student learning, our graduation rate. But particularly with high schools, I agree that needs to be a multifaceted approach, but it also needs to meet the unique needs of a student population in high school these days that have a lot more responsibilities and unique family structures that we need to accommodate. So I hope that in our discussion, that along with talking about buildings, that we talk about the facilities that go and help kids maximize their potential and get to graduate on time. And by that, I mean, I think we need to have a lot more opportunity for e-learning. I think we need to have a lot more variety of when classes are occurring, including evenings. And I think that those kinds of discussions need to be in more than just one or two high schools, that those opportunities need to be available for a lot of kids. And it's part of the mix that goes and addresses our capacity and our ability to serve kids. But the buildings that we build, regardless of what level they are, need to be meeting the, learning the educational needs of our students. And so I really hope that particularly with the high school issue, that we have a robust discussion on the many different paths students need to be able to take when they're going to graduate on time.
Anything else?
Just a quick question. On your program capacity, does that include the Career Academy?
That, good question.
It would include?
What we'll look at in a few slides is period-by-period enrollment. Because currently, capacity is based on final Friday membership, so students are in membership at their home school. And so they would be in their home school capacity number, even though they're spending time at the Career Academy. So hold on with us till we get to the period, class period by class period enrollment, and those numbers are going to be a little bit lower because that would assume that the Career Academy students are out of the building.
I was just thinking, it's not as dire as it looks because we had seats in the Career Academy that are showing up in this number. That's why I asked the question.
You're correct.
Okay.
Yep. And that'll be noticed in the period-by-period enrollment in every school.
We've got a couple of slides that'll really support that.
Okay.
Okay? So we're going to kind of go full circle. This slide here, whoop, I apologize. This slide here shows what LPS currently owns, as we call them undeveloped sites. So we're actually pretty well-positioned around our community for the most part. This past budget cycle, you approved a half-cent levy for us to acquire additional property, and we're aggressively looking, and we continue to look around our community. If I just throw those hotspots on here, you can see where the growth areas are, where our current properties are, and where we might need to spend some time looking. And so, as I said, the district is aggressively looking for property to put ourselves in a good position for future growth. Couple of reminders on the past, 44/50, that's how many students we've grown by in the last five years based on last Friday numbers. That's about 900 per year. Here's kind of a history enrollment chart, 44/50, and over the last 10 years, roughly 8,000 students. We believe that number will continue over the next several years. We feel very confident that it will, and that's just a conservative look at it. This is a breakdown by grade level. We've also included pre-K up here because many of those kids are in our buildings. And so those numbers come back to our last Friday number of just shy of 41,000. And then we break that chart down by elementary, middle, and high school, so you can kind of see how it breaks out across the district. This is a bar chart that probably is a little more indicative of what we're seeing in terms of projected growth. You can see this goes out for the next five years. And so the top green band is probably the one we've just spent the most time on and is probably most concerning. If you look at the next five years in projected high school growth, 1,667. That's just shy of what we would consider an ideal number in our high schools if we could put those kids where we wanted them. That number, if you recall, has been around 1,850. If we had an ideal world and our buildings could support it, our core facilities could support it, 1,850 would be ideal. Doesn't mean we can't handle more than that because we obviously are in many of our buildings. So just the next five years, we're showing 1,667.
One of the things that I note about this slide is it really feeds into the conversation we just had about where we are with high schools. If you look at elementary, middle, and high, our high schools were at that 106% of capacity, and so that's where we have the most overcrowding. If we look at the trends on what the next five years will be, we're going to add almost 1,700 students at the high school level, which adds to that problem. But the other thing I think we really need to note is that this is not what the last five years or the last 10 years looked like on this slide. The last five to 10 years, we've had very little growth at the high school level. It's actually been mostly at the elementary and then into the middle. And that kind of makes sense if you think about children progressing through elementary, middle, and high. It's really only been about the last two or three years that that high school enrollment has started to go up, and that trend is going to continue. So the kind of growth that we're going to see at the high schools isn't something that we've seen over the last 10 years. It's not something that we've been used to. So I think this slide really captures that concept of where our growth is going to be concentrated in the next five years.
We also try to be very conservative because we don't want to overestimate and overbuild and those types of things. You look at the middle school numbers there and that's 804, that's equivalent to a middle school. And if you look at our current recommended 10-year plan in front of you, it has two middle schools on there. And one might say, well, we only need one based on that number. But again, if you look at long range and if a bond issue is a few years out and the time you design it and build it, we've already added a middle school worth of kids just in that five or six years. And then if you predict bond issues based on history, you're another seven or eight or nine years out, and you'll easily have another middle school worth of kids in our community based on conservative growth. So I think this is just a good indication that kids are continuing to come to Lincoln and Lincoln is growing. I think David's presentation, about 40,000 units in the next several years, I mean, all that equates to more student numbers. The pressure is, right now, is looking at the high school age, but all age levels are going to require more facilities. So I think this was a good graph to state that. These are hard to read, but I think it, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Barb, sorry. That's okay. David had mentioned that we have a growth rate of 1.2 to 1.4, and that's been trending for a while. Is that a trend that's going to last for the next 20 to 40 years as well? Is that a projection that's going to stay kind of constant?
Our projections that we created five years ago when we did the major update of the plan indicated that that was a very consistent, has been, and will continue to be a very consistent trend in growth rate. The growth rate right now, our projections show, by the time we get into the 2030s, it starts to slow a little bit, but that's more because we will be that much bigger of a community at that point. But on average, it's going to continue to be in that 1.2, 1.3% per year.
Okay.
It's very, very consistent. We will update those numbers in a few years before we do another major update. So we'll have those numbers in the 2020, 2021 time period. So we'll have those numbers in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one time period. But we fully expect it to stay that way, more or less.
So the growth is pretty consistent and robust, and you're taking into consideration that the community is larger, so that percentage just kind of levels off, but still a sizable number. I just thought that that's a good thing to keep in mind. Thank you.
Yep.
David, before we go, this is not a fair question to ask you, but I'm going to ask it anyway, because I ask it in virtually all of the circles that I have an opportunity to, to, to work with in the business community. Where is the growth coming from? And, and I ask that question because we still haven't announced a big industry that's going, and I understand Innovation Campus, and then people have explained that to me, that that's going to continue to expand, university, government, town, that kind of thing. Can you shed any light on that? Because this really is phenomenal growth in an environment where there's very low unemployment. And while I think all of our businesses and industries are expanding one point two to one point four percent, that's a lot of growth for just internal expansion.
Correct. Yeah, we didn't get IBM, so we can't hang our hat on that. But what we're seeing is, first of all, historically, Lincoln and Omaha is similar. We have, over the last number of decades, been attracting the rural community population. And you look at all the counties in the state of Nebraska, really, it's only about a handful that are consistently growing, and then the rest of them are actually either stagnant or losing population. So there's a long-term, longstanding trend of, Lincoln is one of those that attracts that growth, that in migration. So there's something with that. We also, our demographics tell us that we, Nebraska in a general sense, and Lancaster County specifically, we actually produce babies fairly well. I think a lot of that has to do with being, having a stable economy. We, we don't have the big ups and downs economically, and that does obviously go into those decision-making points of, am I going to have a family? How many kids am I going to have? Those types of things. So that is a, that is, the majority of our growth is the natural growth, which is growing, having more families with more kids. So, so that does drive the biggest part, chunk of that growth. But we do have in-migration from rural areas. We actually have positive net migration from out of state, as well as from international migration. So part of that's because we are, and not a part of it, a big reason for that is that we are the flagship university campus. We have that attraction. We also have the state capital. So you start adding all those things together. We happen to have a very robust economy trending in a very positive way with technology. And we've heard all the, we know all the examples, we've heard about them. That's a very real thing for Lincoln. We have the Silicon Prairie momentum behind us right now, and that's very recent, but it's a real thing. So you add all those together, and that's where that growth is coming from, from the combination of things.
Annie, did you still question that?
Well, I know that, but we've always been the flagship. I mean, we've always had the university, and we've always had the, you know, the capital. To me, the new is the technology. I guess, pardon me, I'm thinking too, I'm with you, it's because it's kind of makes it hard to understand of like, are we attracting people who can afford the two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar houses? And if you do, then you also, I mean, you know, the numbers of, then the support staff you have to have for the industry and so forth, and that brings more who can do the hundred-and-fifty or less, or the rentals. I know we're not the city, we're not figuring that out, but it is part of the whole bigger picture. To me, it's really important of like, I hear you, but there, pardon me, it just goes, doesn't seem like there's been that much, that doesn't seem that different to me to add to the growth, so. If you ever come up with any more, I'd love to hear it, yeah.
I do have one more. Very, recently, in the last ten years, we have had a focal point from our, from the university to expand the population for the students. That wasn't that long ago, that we were down around twenty thousand students. Now we're up to twenty-five thousand students. So that, just there, you have a significant bump, and the goal there is to continue to grow that. So there's, there are plans, and there are efforts to try to attract more people in that sense, too. And that, that's a big multiplier. A university is a great thing for a city, and we're lucky to have that.
I would add that Lincoln Public Schools historically mirrored the city at that one to one and a half percent growth, and then that changed. That changed shortly before the two thousand fourteen bond issue. And like, when I first joined the school district, the conversation was, is this two to three percent growth of the closer to eight fifty to a thousand students, instead of three hundred to four hundred students, the new normal? And I know the exec teams had that conversation a number of times, is, you know, is that, are we going to go back to the one to two percent growth year over year that we experienced for decades? Or is this two to three percent, which doesn't sound like a big variation, but when you're talking three hundred, four hundred students versus eight hundred students, it's very different. And that has changed, and that has stayed consistent for about the last seven, eight years. So that is something that changed, whether it's families moving here with kids more frequently, you know, with students, but, so there's been a lot of stability in history in the projections, but we had a shift where we had an uptick, which I think is what we're feeling as a school district in our growth trend.
Annie?
And that was my question.
There you go. Anyone else?
Okay. The next three slides are really just the elementary, middle, and high school capacity documents. And I, the only thing I want to point out is, since we're kind of a graphic group, the, each one of these documents, the schools that are highlighted in blue are related to the so-called blue hotspots on the growth maps. So these are the buildings that we believe might see some growth. So whether they're at seventy-eight percent, or ninety percent, or a hundred percent, we're kind of watching out for that, along with those that are, that are ninety and a hundred. If there's a little yellow box in there, that means that, that school has a project going on where the capacity could change. Like a Randolph Elementary, there's a construction project going on, I think a classroom or two is added. That capacity will change at the conclusion of that project. And if you look at the middle school map, there's a green box, and that is a new facility. So all kind of color-coded, just to give you an idea of what those mean. It's more graphic representation than anything.
Scott, just to interrupt you for a second, we obviously can't read those on the screens, but some of my colleagues have noticed.
He should have all those.
We have printed copies of those capacity charts, so.
Yep. And there's the high school one. These next two slides are the ones that, ones that Dr. Standish referenced. This does not by any means dismiss the fact that we have high schools that are crowded. And we had this conversation in planning, and so we spent some time, and I believe the last Friday numbers at North Star were twenty-one ninety-one, so just shy of twenty-two-hundred. And so we broke down the day at each of the high schools to say, you know, how many of those kids are actually at the building each period? Because some of them could be at Career Academy, some of them could be at Arts and Humanities, some could be at Science Focus Zoo School, some could be at other locations. Maybe they have a job, and they're not there the last two periods of the day. And so we broke it down by period, and you can see that North Star barely got over two thousand for three periods of the day. Not that that's a good thing, but it's a good thing compared to twenty-one ninety-one. So there's actually a hundred-and-eighty-some kids less than the actual enrollment at that building each period of the day. That's a good thing. And so you go back to Matt's comments earlier about the solution for high schools is multifaceted. It might be more kids at the Career Academy. It might be an expansion of the Science Focus Program, which we're undertaking as we speak, so that more of these kids can be, in a sense, diverted from the actual high school physical plant that we call high school, to other high school programs and options. And so will that solve the nearly seventeen-hundred students that we're predicting in the next five years? Probably not. So, but it's probably a good start at minimizing that number, to see if we can come up with a comprehensive solution to deal with high school growth. And I think that's kind of what that slide indicates.
I just want to add, this is just a snapshot, because this is not official membership. So this is a totally different data set that we asked for. I did ask for it from every school, and waited till about the third week of January, just knowing from high school experience that you start your semester, you need schedules to settle in. So I thought waiting a couple weeks into the semester and collecting the data from schools, pulling it from their scheduling, was a good point in time to do it. But I don't want anyone to think that this is going to tie back to an official membership, or that we could ever recreate these numbers again, because they would change every day, every minute. And I thought waiting till about the third week of January was about the right moment in time to capture it, because I thought that might be a maximum, without students having dropped classes or things, so.
So just a quick question to that. This is enrollment and not attendance.
Correct.
Okay.
And the next slide, kind of.
Actually, just go back to that real quick for a couple of things. First of all, I just want to point out, it's neat to me to see that we've got a couple of buildings that are doing a really good job of doing an early bird hour, a zero hour, and an eighth-period hour. I think that's really exciting, to see us using those facilities well. You'll notice, like, for example, the attendance at Southeast has a huge zero hour, but then their last, last period of the day is their smallest period, presumably because you have kids going earlier in the day, which I think goes to what Barb was referring to a little bit of, you know, maybe multiple start times or things like that, that might accommodate different kids' schedules, would be something for us to consider. The other thing that is interesting to me when I look at this is that I, if a kid's in a Career Academy at fifth period, is, are they showing up on this then?
No, they wouldn't be. That's why these numbers are lower. Because anyone who's enrolled then at a focus program would not be in this moment.
Yeah. So you see a little bit of impact, but not a significant impact, because actually, the higher attendance days, hours are still in the middle of the day, when kids would, many kids would already be gone to the Career Academy. And so there's, there's definitely some more space for the Career Academy, hopefully to impact, and our others, other focus programs, not just Career, but Career Academy and all of our focus programs, to, to impact these numbers even more.
The current Career Academy schedule doesn't overlap any hours, so I'm not sure that that's, I, I think the, the point is correct, but I, there's something missing in there.
Well, then I guess, I mean, Zoo School, or, sorry, the Science Focus Program, the Arts and Humanities, those all, those would, for sure.
Yeah.
This next slide just looks at it a little bit differently. It shows you, as of February one, how many kids are at those other programs, which, that shows you a total of seven-hundred-and-thirty-four high school students serving settings other than the home high school. And then we have Nuremberger, Sherrill, the International Program at Lincoln High, but actually, those kids are at Lincoln High. And the ROTC kids are actually at Northeast. But it shows you that seven-thirty-four, what numbers, enrollment numbers are at those other programs that are offsite. This map here is just a summary, again, a little bit of the elementary growth hotspots. Those were those hundred percent, shows you the, the growth hotspots. And am I going the right direction here? I need to double-check here. Oh, yes. I apologize. I'm going to back up. This is an overall view of the city, which we've seen this document before, shows the elementaries that are at a hundred percent, shows the growth hotspots, and then we're going to start to zoom here in a second. This adds the areas impacted by those growth hotspots, so that long, longer, much longer list of elementary schools. And then we started to zoom in by quadrant. And this is where it starts to get a little more interesting. And so this is the Northwest quadrant, and this is using the twenty-seventh and O. And in the upper right-hand corner, if you can see that, it shows building permits for two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen. So there's roughly three hundred and sixty or seventy building permits just in that quadrant. And those dots on the map are indicating where those building permits are located. So you look at those kind of hotspots, again, a lot of those dots are within those areas that we've predicted growth. And one of the areas that I want to kind of reference, that David talked about, is you look over here on the south end of Arnold, and David referenced an area that, over here along the interstate, that used to be industrial, that was just converted to residential in the last twelve to eighteen months. Does that sound right, David? Our nervousness is that that could happen a little bit more in that area. And what, what do we do? How do we react to that if that is the case? And when you look at Northwest, we know that both Arnold, which is up here, and Cooser over here, both have stress. And when you look at the growth, over here by Cooser, Fallbrook, we even know there's an area over here west of Fallbrook, that we really don't show a hotspot, but there's a lot of development going on, and over here, south end of Arnold Heights. Those are areas that we really don't have a perfect plan for. It would be nice to say, let's just build another elementary school out there in Northwest Lincoln. The real question is, where would you build it? Because those kids are so spread out. So that's a solution that we've struggled with, even in the last bond issue. We deferred that decision. And I think it's another one of those conversations that we need to have, about what is the, the real solution for Northwest Lincoln? Or do we start to zoom in and say, do you do a roper at Cooser?
Barb, sorry.
I know, I'm just.
I think that that discussion can go for a number of different areas in town. And I recall when we did our bond issue in two thousand and six, and then in two thousand and fourteen, that when we build new buildings, we always go and allow for that building to reasonably grow. And the roper comparison kind of makes me uncomfortable. I don't know if that was a reasonable one. But generally speaking, most of these have four sections in a grade. Am I correct on that?
Actually, Arnold and Cooser have six.
Six, okay. But like Wyson, Clefcorn, they're four?
Wyson is four, Clefcorn is three.
Yeah. And so I, I do think as we look at our discussions, that we need to go and think about what is reasonable additions to be able to go and handle growth in certain areas. I don't have any perfect answers, it's just something for discussion. Annie?
Yeah, I think one of the challenges for, for Northwest Lincoln is that there's about three spots where we could really use a third of an elementary school. But there is not a single spot that we could use a full. And, and I think, you know, we've had that discussion in planning, and I think we're going to need to do some, some serious work to try to figure out the best solution for that area of town. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Anyone else?
So we just did this as an exercise. We shifted to Southeast Lincoln, and if you look at all those hotspots, if you look in that upper right-hand corner, nine hundred-plus building permits in the last two years, and you can see the location by all those dots. We actually have the ability to zoom closer, and we just took one of those hotspots, and we zoomed in on actual lots that have been platted, and where those building permits are. And so every one of those lots that has a dot, that's a building permit in the last two years. The thing that stresses me is all those boxes that don't have a dot yet, because that means there's going to be a building permit pulled and more houses. And so, and there's a lot more development that's going to take place. And this is only one of these areas. There's many of these areas around our community that are all going to feel that stress. And I think, kind of to, to conclude that a little bit, before we talk about this optimization, is I think that's what our plan was based on, is that we've looked at a lot of this growth stress on all quadrants of our community, and that's why our recommendations are what they are. And do we have the answer for every location? For instance, Northwest? No, we've suggested an elementary school, but I think that's a, a big question that we don't have answered right now. And I think we have to have that serious discussion about where it goes, if it is an elementary school.
Is there room in Freedstrom? Because I know it doesn't show on the map, but if you're putting Fallbrook out there, Freedstrom and Fallbrook obviously are closer. No, I don't want to get into the war over whether we have kids crossing Highway thirty-four or not, but the kids that go to Cooser cross I-80, so we could really have a, a really robust discussion on, is one worse than the other? Because I know Freedstrom sits out there on the opposite side of Highway thirty-four from Fallbrook, and is there capacity room there? And is there capacity at Campbell? Because we do have children crossing I-80 to go to Cooser, and there, there might be a solution for that one. I don't know that there's those discussions in South Lincoln, except that we built three new elementaries in the last decade that are all full. But is there capacity moving in its, in its way out there to kind of give us breathing room as we go through this plan?
Campbell's eighty-five percent, and Freedstrom is eighty... Campbell's 85%, and Freedstrom is 82%. So that could lead you to say, yes, there is some capacity.
Not, not a third of an elementary, but yeah.
Right.
And Campbell is a six-section building, and I believe Freedstrom is a four-section building. And so one might say, could you add on to Freedstrom to bring it up to a six? Core facilities, I think, would really feel extreme stress at that location. And I think the site would, too. So some of our buildings, the older buildings, they're pretty well maxed out in terms of whether it's a two-section, three-section, or four-section. It would be difficult to add on to some of them. But there is capacity at both of those locations.
Okay. Annie?
Well, it occurs to me, I mean, I've not been in the planning conversations, but, so when you say we need a new elementary, I mean, we need a third of an elementary, that's because we're looking at elementary the way we've always looked at elementary. Am I correct? Is it, I'm going to throw it out there. I mean, it's the same kind of thing to think about in elementary as we are with high school. Is there an alternative approach that still looks at student needs? We can, doing that, but it's not, we need to build a huge, another big building. I mean, and, and is it something that's, I'm just throwing it out there, an approach that's like, this is what we could do for, you know, a five-to-10-year period, more than throwing up a big circus tent, you know, and the kids get to go in this cool place. But, I mean, is there an alternative aspect to it? Is there a, a way for us to think about, well, if we need a third of an elementary, what does that mean? How, how do we do that? And if we're being told that we're not going to grow a lot more past what this can, because we can't tolerate it, then we're looking at a 20-year thing that is, in our own way, we're saying, we know we've built buildings to last 101 years, but are we looking at an, an impermanent solution to an impermanent, possibly impermanent problem? Or another way of, like, another ways of, is there any way for us to be looking at an alternative that leads us to alternatives in how we approach growth? I mean, do we always have to be building the next big building, when what we can see here is we need a third of a school? And also, we're talking neighborhoods. So you have kids in Arnold. I mean, I would, you know, that's a very different neighborhood than the kids in over by the Cooser thing. Is there a way of, of honoring the neighborhood and having the kids be in the neighborhood? I'm just, I don't know. I'm like, I'm like, Barb, I don't have an answer. But it's like, maybe we need to stop, take a little bit, and how can we take away some of our boundaries that we've put on our own self of how we approach the problem?
Barb's got one.
The challenge, let's call it a challenge. I want to remind us that when we talk about, over in the Northwest area, that when we talk about a third of the elementary, we also have had a big section of develop, land that is ready for development, that just switched from industrial to residential. So that issue of one-third could quickly turn into a whole school. I also want to remind you that equity issues are a huge issue for that particular part of town, in particular, that was promised a new elementary school for over 20 years, and, and middle school, and had their children bused to different parts of the city for a temporary solution. So I think that as we have our discussions, and we don't want to limit ourselves with discussions, but we also have to bring out that issue of equity. That has been a value for our district, and it's a value that I support, that we need to continue to bring forward. When we talk about being, having alternatives, when we talk about elementary kids, middle school kids, we are talking about a population that does better with consistency. When we talk about high school students, of course, consistency is good, but the life, life changes start to take hold greater. And so alternatives actually are starting to meet their needs. I'm afraid that when we go and we create alternatives for younger populations, that we get into those equity issues. So those are just some thoughts along the way here.
Okay, good. Annie, then Annie.
Okay. And Scott, could you back up a couple of slides to that Northwest quadrant? Right. So just to clarify, when, when we've been talking about we need, you know, a third of an elementary in three spots, what we're really specifically talking about is that typically, we would design an elementary school for about 500 students. And so a third of that is about 160, 170. There's specific areas where development is occurring or expected to occur, where you could probably accommodate about 160 or so students roughly. But those three areas, you know, aren't all in the same spot that you would put an elementary for 500. So that, that's really all that, that comment is. It isn't to suggest that we build a third of an elementary school or do a one-section elementary school. It just kind of explains the, the challenge that we have of where the students are expected to be based on where our facilities are. The other piece of that, though, and Roper had been mentioned, is that if you take a six-section school, like a Cooser, and expand it out to eight, to say, well, there's your, there's your third of an elementary, is to take, take it from six to eight, we run into some challenges on larger elementaries. And I think there's concern amongst our colleagues of what a school looks like when you start to get large enough, and, and it starts to look more like the size of a middle school rather than an elementary school. So I think those are the kinds of things that we've discussed as a board. But to your main point of, we need to look at alternatives, I think everything's on the table. I think we need to have more conversations. I think we need to reengage our community. There'll be some feedback that we get from the strategic planning process that we just did. But ultimately, we're going to need another community group to look, like the S-PAAC, like the Student Housing Task Force, to look over some of these alternative ideas. The answer isn't always to add on in the traditional way that we've done. So I really appreciate that, that comment and that thought, and I agree with that.
Okay. Annie, do you still have something?
I do. I don't think, I totally agree with you, that, that equity and meeting our student needs are the two very important things. But I also don't think alternative does not mean equity. And I'm not saying we would only be, build, you know, two rooms for them up in Northwest Lincoln, because that's all we need. I guess I'm thinking, at this point, this is the neighborhood in which we do, how could we look at alternative? I have a feeling this is going to happen in many other parts of Lincoln, because we're getting set relatively spread out, as well as so forth. So I, I would agree with you, but I, I would say, when I say alternative, I'm not saying, you know, like I said, it's not the circus tent, but it's, and how could we, how could we, is it possible for us to look smaller and yet it's equal? Or it's different, but it's equal? Or it's something like that? And how do we look at that way? And start thinking through it that way? And only during looking at this at this point, because this is the point that's up for conversation in here?
Matt?
Well, and when you said alternative, I think my mind went, maybe similar where Barb's went, of online, right? And that's where I, I got to think, wait, that's not a really, probably not a great solution for elementary school. But there are, there are other alternatives. Like, I did my student teaching in a district that had a K1 building, a 2, 3 building, and a 4, 5 building, that all served the same area. So there would be a, maybe an, there's, there's a myriad of other alternatives than just online ed, which is where my mind went. You're right, though. We do, we are going to have to explore that, particularly in this area and at our high school level.
Anyone else?
Very helpful conversation. And I'm not going to dig myself in a hole, but I, I think maybe a non-traditional solution, but traditional solutions have never really been, say, let's say, consistent over the last 20 or 30 years. When we passed the '06 bond issue, all of the elementary schools were six-section. We've not done that since then. We built a three-section. We built a four-section with the potential to grow. I think if you were a principal or an instructor, you would love to have a smaller neighborhood elementary school. I think that's even much healthier. Most people would agree that if those numbers were 400 or 500 kids versus 700 or 800 kids in an elementary school, that would be traditionally a better fit. And when Lincoln was more densely populated, which the maps show that, a neighborhood school served the square mile. And that was maybe four houses every acre. Now, there's maybe even less than three houses every acre. And so we're getting more spread out. And so our buildings don't look the same. We're covering more area. There's not as many, the neighborhoods aren't as tight. It's, it's much more difficult.